All right. Oh, is it not on? Sorry, speaker's not on.
I got my bone on Rick's chair. Lost my sense of humor.
Does he did that too?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But I really believe that, too. I don't like it. Yep.
I like that, are we pledging?
We pledging.
Microphone, I fix it someday. This is so awkward to use. A lot of paperwork here, so I'm gonna really spread out, I think.
All right. Call the order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sean, do you mind doing? No, no, Sean, I'm sorry, Rick, would you mind?
Sean, I'm not prepared for it.
I'll do it. I'll do it, that's fine then, I'll do it. Please, everyone, bow your heads. Father God, we come to you most graciously and humbly. We ask that you continue to look over our city. We ask that you continue to keep our city workers and our public safety workers safe. Lord, we ask that you continue to shine your light on to Lawrence. We ask that you also give us the discernment to make wise decisions. We ask all these things in the Most High Name. Amen. Okay, we have a call. Do we have anyone on the field there?
No.
Yes? All right. Thank you. To try to make this go a little faster. Comments of council members and special recognitions? Are there any?
Yes, I would like for us to take a moment of silence in regards to what's happening across the sea with the lives that have lost. I think it's very important that we understand that we all are on here, and so just a moment of silence, please.
Moment of silence for the loss of lives over in Israel.
We'll take a moment of silence, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. I received an email from a Mr. George. He was concerned about a curve going around Boy Scout where the house is, has the pillars and everything in front of it, and he just wanted to know what the city was gonna be doing right there because he saw a Department of Public Works truck and everything, and he was just concerned about what was going on there. And they're getting ready to do a curve with the spikes that are less cost-effective. I think they're like plastic strips or something, and they're gonna put those around the curves. They already have them at the one on Lee Road going down the hill to go around that curve, so they're putting them there also.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else?
Mr. President, just have a one special recognition for our new Kiwanis Club. They just celebrated their 35th anniversary operating in the community, and one of the things they do for our MSD Lawrence Township kids, they give two $1,000 scholarships to each grade in each, you know, one at Lawrence Central, one at Lawrence North for a program called Character Counts, where the student describes what character means to them and how they intend to apply that once they graduate and go on to college. So they've given about $8,000 a year for 35 years, so we just wanted to give an acknowledgement to their club.
What's the name of the?
Kiwanis.
Kiwanis Club. And the scholarship is?
Character Counts.
Sounds like a great program.
Even Mr. Vest's kids in the past have received that scholarship.
Yeah, that's awesome. I mean, good character means something these days. All right. Anyone, anything else? Signing of vouchers, approval of claims and authorizations of payment. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. It's been, motion made by Councilman Freeman, seconded by Councilman Denny. Do we have to do, we have to do a roll call, or?
No.
Okay, all right, so we can just, so, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Let's pose. All right, motion passed, motion carries. All right. For those that might be in the audience following along with our agenda, we're going to move the agenda around a little bit to, Councilman Russell has some family she needs to get to, so we're gonna hit some of the, some high-level stuff first and get that through, okay? So first thing we're gonna address is number E, which is proposal number 13, 2023. If you can read my title, please.
Proposal number 13, 2023, introduced by Councilors Chevlot, Russell and Wells. A proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2024 budget year.
All right. Can we, will they entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second it.
Motion, motion, Council Russell, seconded, Council Wells. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I think I would just add, we just heard this tonight in the Finance Committee meeting, and what we're looking at is a balanced budget going into 2024, and, you know, we discussed how the budget matches the goals that was presented to us previously, and it passed out of committee tonight, three to zero.
And I am so sorry I didn't see on the agenda, not on the agenda, okay, I apologize. Is that the only report out of that committee that we need to be aware of?
Well, almost all of this came out of finance, so I could deal with it one at a time.
Okay, that's perfect. We're in this, yeah, let's be right procedure, I guess, as well. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? Aye? Can you oppose? All right, passes. Okay. For those following along, we're gonna, the next set of business, we're gonna go to new business and go to resolution number 13, 2023. Have the clerk read my title.
Resolution number 13, 2023, introduced by Councilors Denny and Whitfield. A resolution of the Common Council of City of Lawrence, Indiana to approve the statement of benefits of On Point Fort Ben LLC.
All right.
Mr. Chair, we have, tonight, I would request that we go ahead and hear this tonight and perhaps take a vote on it. I believe downtown Indianapolis is, downtown Marion County is waiting for our vote to see how they'll, you know, proceed, and we have tonight members from the FHRA as well as the Revival Businesses ready to present.
All righty. That's fine, so is there, so we'll call some folks up to discuss this. Who would like to go? Someone from FHRA or some, who would like to, who'd like to discuss this first? All right.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Vest, President, Fort Harrison Reuse Authority. We have a presentation from On Point Meyer Nagum as it pertains to the old PX building located on the East Lawton Loop. Over the past couple of years, development, rehabbing of the building, interior and exterior has been going on extensively. Everything from raising the roof, they could give you the whole, what has been going on on the inside, and you should have had packets placed in your mailboxes on Friday, giving you kind of the what's going on. The purpose, and the Reuse Authority itself has a substantial financial investment in the improvements that have been made on that property over the years. Now, there are tenants in there, they are Lawrence businesses, high-paying wages. The number-one goal is to lessen the burden as cost of rehabbing has gone up directly to the tenants, and this is, I'm gonna use, it's more or less a pass-through within the TIF district as it pertains to tax dollars and the like. These are not to booster or support failing businesses or to draw businesses into Lawrence. These are current Lawrence businesses that are successful, that in the future would like to add more employees. One of the tenants, right now, occupied the Spanish Advantage Building there on 59th Street. They're vacating that, they screwed up in reverse, they've run out of room for the Spanish Advantage folks. They need that property, and they would like to be located, Chuck Pachet would like to be located on Lawton Loop in the old PX building. And that's the purpose, and as you see, it's a breakdown, it's a tax abatement over five years, paid gradually at a, on a schedule, over the, like I said, over the next five years. And with that, I'll hand off to our friends from On Point Meyer Nagum.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What was left in your mailbox, too, just in case you wanna take a quick? So appreciate you taking the time to talk with us and hear about the project. We're excited to be here and appreciate your time. So wanted to start and just, so Jeff was just walking through, he gave.
What is your name, sir?
I am Dan Connors. I am Vice President of Development with Meyer Nagum Development.
Thank you.
Okay, so, wanted to start and just, again, like Jeff had just kind of give us a run-through of the building, but just give some context of what we're talking about here, so we're all on the same page, and then we can get into what the specific ask is and answer any questions you have. We do have Sean Curran with Curran Design and Chuck Pachet with Mark III Management here, so these are both the users, they're here to answer questions at the end as well. So to start, to just give you some historical context on the building, it was built in 1908, so you're talking about a building that's 125 years old, but there's a lot of cool history with the building. So it was the PX Building Post-Exchange, which is just your grocery store. There was also a gymnasium on the bottom level, so it was a gathering place, which is what it comes down to. Fast forward, I think 40s, 50s, it turned into one of the officers' clubs, so longstanding history, and the building had a full life. And so you fast forward to the 90s, when the base closes, and since that time, fast forward all the way to 2021, the building sat vacant, and you can see in some of the pictures there that have been included, I'll walk you through some of the improvements that were made, but it looks like a building that was 90 years old, having lived a full life, and then left for 20-ish years, so. Scope of work-wise, and just to give you an idea of the magnitude of the project, so going back to July of 2021, we've invested about $2.5 million into structural improvements. So these are things like, the roof was collapsing in, we've got new windows, we've got a lot of interior structural work that we'll talk you through the details of, but the point being is that there were life, safety and issues that would have to be addressed before anyone could ultimately occupy the building. And as you know, obviously, 125-year-old building, you're gonna have issues, you're gonna have problems, but these were, there is always surprises, which is what it came down to. So the request and what we're here to talk about today, well, and I guess just to back up to, on top of the $2.5 million that we've invested just to get the building back into shell condition, there's an additional $1 million that the two tenants and ourselves are actually investing into the space to build it out, so it's a total of about $3.5 million that's being invested to renovate the building. So the request today, as Jeff framed up, is a five-year tax abatement program, and he really hit on a couple of the key components. So one, there's no benefit to us as the developer. This is all being passed through directly to the end-users to help support businesses that were started in Lawrence, have grown in Lawrence, and want to stay in Lawrence. And the reality is, you know, when you talk about the tax abatement program, it's $85,000 over a five-year term. There is 5% of that that goes right back into its develop indie and a grant program, so right away, there's a portion of it that goes back, and at all times, there is some level of taxes being repaid, so this is not a full tax, full tax abatement in any scope.
What do you mean by that?
So it starts at a 75% tax abatement to where there is 25% of the taxes being paid as they normally would. That then reduces every five years until that gets down to 25%, and then the entire tax burden is paid at that point. Does that?
Well, yeah, I do, I got some other questions later, I'll let you keep talking.
So.
For, when you're talking about the tax there, it's the new tax on the improvement, not the existing tax that you currently pay, is that correct?
Yeah.
But the current tax you pay goes into the TIF.
From the FHRA's TIF.
Right, which doesn't pay the citizens of Lawrence, doesn't pay to our public stuff, right? Wanna make sure I'm on the wrong thought? Am I wrong? Can someone correct me? You make a payment, I remember that. What percentage of the tax dollars is those payments?
A percentage?
It's not very much compared to the money that would have been going in. It's not, it's a low amount. I was there when it was negotiated. Huh? And those payments, those two payments? What'd you say? I appreciate that. I didn't mean to get you off your presentation.
Hi, Heather Milliken, I'm the Executive Director with the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority. Yeah, as I was saying, percentage of the taxes that are collected in the FHRA TIF allocation area do go back to the city per an agreement we have.
How long has that been going on?
Has been going on for 15, 20 years.
I don't believe it's been that long.
Yeah, it has, it has.
We must have renegotiated that in the last few years.
We, the FHRA started that under, I believe it was Mayor Ricketts. So it's been, when was, I'm sorry, I can't remember when Mr. Mayor Ricketts' term was, but.
There's no one here from the administration that was here in the last term.
2008, 2012.
So it's been, it's been a number.
2008 to 2000.
I remember us.
I have our agreements.
Only reason that I know about it is because I remember us visiting that and voting on that, and that was a big deal. Do you know what I'm talking about? Okay, so, so the payments changed, something changed. If it was before, it changed since I've been on as council. I don't know what happened before, but I know that that was a big issue.
Nothing's changed, but the, the number or the dollars change every year based on the AVs, assessed values, and what's collected.
I wish someone was here that was here then. Best is here, Russell changed.
Yeah, we've always made the state services payment.
I don't wanna speculate, but I think, no speculation get you in trouble. I think the concept had always been an 80/20, but I'm not gonna speculate, you know how that, with the AV adjusting, you know how it works, but I wanna speculate that it was an 80/20 concept of giving a public service fee paid twice a year back to the city.
Right, I'll have to do some more research. I wish Lisa was here, but I do remember that there was some, some conversations, some changes that I know I was a part of. I can't recall six, seven years ago, but you know.
It was fixed amounts for the first several years, and then it, based on percentage, and then it, but then it has changed to represent assessed values and.
Maybe that's what it was, to be fair, I do know it's a change, okay? That's what I'm getting, yeah, all right, thank you.
Any other question?
Well, you'll probably stay close.
I actually have a question. None of this jeopardizes any of your tip lines, correct?
Right, no, absolutely.
No, no, it's just.
We have Pro as our consultant that works those numbers for us, and they actually, you know, work with the county assessor's office and make sure that they've got tax rates correct, everything, so that the right amounts go back to the city.
Right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not debating, yeah, I'm not debating the right amount, I'm just debating that TIF doesn't add to our public safety and to our general fund, and then to give a tax abatement in a TIF area, so the taxpayers in the city are not getting their fair share out of the TIF, out of the fort right now because of the TIF, and then we give an abatement to a business on the fort, I don't know how that helps the taxpayer on 46th Street. And so then the next question I had is, where's the jobs? How many people are employed? Are you adding new jobs? Are you hiring people from Lawrence? There's lots of Lawrence businesses that are here in Lawrence, but the people who work it don't live in Lawrence. And so I'm just trying to figure out how this benefits the average citizen of Lawrence, because that's who I represent.
Well, I believe On Point Meyer Nagum put together a pretty good packet that outlines, you know.
How's it been, I read, I read one of them, so I'm curious, so how does it benefit the average citizen of Lawrence? Is the sponsor of the bill here? You sponsored this one? Deb and Sean, okay. Well, maybe you guys could speak to why you think it's good for the citizens of Lawrence.
You know, you can have his presentation, and I can tell you why I feel like it would be a good investment to continue the work that's already established on the fort.
Go ahead. You wanna wait till his presentation's done?
I mean, I agree, we have small businesses on the fort, and this is not gonna set a precedent, but to keep people that are already businesses there, I feel that we need to reach out and continue to work with them to keep them there. They are gonna increase, and they are gonna hire more people. We could ask if they're, you know, type of people that they're gonna hire, the trade that they're gonna hire. I just think it's important to keep that business there on the fort that there already exists. They're going to invest money into a building. The FRA have already did 2.5 million, invest into that building, and so to keep the current renters there would be more important than having them leave and try to find somebody else.
And so I have a total different look at that, because these businesses are valuable, valuable businesses, they're doing well, right?
Yes.
I've been in business myself for 13 years. I gotta pay my own way, because I got a good business, you know what I mean? And so I funded myself, right? And then the other question I got about the million dollars, or the $3 million in the building, in the vest, what's the, what's the value of the building today? So a million-dollar bill out really ain't, ain't that big. I mean, you know, I mean, I put 20 grand in just IT stuff, you know, in my building.
Good point, everything's more expensive today than it was.
Right, so, you know.
I'm Travis Tucker, I'm the EVP of Development for Meyer Nagum. I think it might make sense to do a little bit of a historical piece, because it's the reason why, I wanna tell you, like, I always believe in never asking for anything we don't need. So, so let me give you a little historical piece in how we got here today. So Fort Harrison Reuse has been looking at opportunities and partnerships to redevelop buildings that need to be developed. We love Lawrence, we saw an opportunity in Lawrence, but the problem with an old building is you don't know what you're getting into.
Right.
So we were like, as a developer, you're always looking for risk, and then you try to eliminate all risk as much as you can before you get into it. And we did a lot of that, but there was a lot of things we just didn't know. We made a commitment, we got selected as a redevelopment partner, so we did what we said we were going to do, and we went in and we identified some of the things that Dan had mentioned that really drove the cost of the project to cost that, you know, rents on a project, hold on, okay. The rents, rents of any commercial building or office space are a direct result of the cost of the project. So if you look at what our rental rates are today, we're pushing the higher rate of other office projects.
You are pushing higher because rental rates are dropping.
I know.
Like crazy.
And when we made a commitment to redeveloping this building that was in desperate need, I'll tell you who the tenants.
So how, so, I'm sorry to cut you, but let me tell you how my mind is. So you come in here telling me that it's all about the tenant, and the money's gonna go back to the tenant.
Yes.
But this money is to help the tenant so that you have occupancy, which helps you, because right now, I just read in the Wall Street Journal, Chicago is about to tank our whole economy off of lease rental, right? Then the next question I have is, I remember Dan Zerner sitting up here saying that there's nothing at the fort that we've used the tax abatement for. Is that true? So this is setting a precedent, because this is the first. I'm just making sure I'm getting my thoughts correctly.
Thank you. So I, there's a couple of things you brought up that we wanna talk about. So it is on the higher end, but the higher end is because of the cost that we had, so the tenants that were in the building at the time we took it over were like maybe five or six raccoons, and a couple possums, and some vandals that came in with spray paint paint.
Right.
So it was a investment in a partnership that we made at that time to improve and elevate Lawrence and Ford. So now we're at a point where we've got to make a return, and it's based off of rents. Now, the point that you brought up, which is fine, because we made it, we were in early, and actually, when we were in early, we were in early before the downturn.
Right.
So we, we were best of intentions, right? So.
Right, but we're all getting kicked in the tail because of that, right?
I totally agree with you.
Okay.
And again, I'm not here asking for anything.
You're asking for $87,000, ain't you?
Asking for your support on a tax abatement.
$85,000 tax abate over five years.
I know, but it's still free money.
Us as building owners, so here today, asking you, as building owners, when we get a tax bill from the taxing authority, we pass that through to the tenants that are in the building. These tenants that are in the building pay that as an operating expense.
I understand.
So their rents are higher on the net basis because of the amount of money that had to be invested into the improvements to bring it back to life, to make it a valuable asset to grow businesses and create commerce and employees for Lawrence. So that's the.
So there's, so I agree with you, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to, good conversation, I do wanna get it through quickly for Lawrence, because I can't. So there's, can we stop it there and say, grow employees for Lawrence? And I would like to know what that is. If the, if I, if I go talk to a citizen of Lawrence and I said I gave a tax abatement to a business, I should be able to say why very clearly, because we don't do that, right? And there's been nobody from the administration, I don't think, saying that they even support it.
Yes.
Okay? And so I find it very interesting, because typically, when the mayor wants this, the city administration, they make the request. I told you that on the phone, too, I see, I told you that. Typically, when they want something, Mr. Dan Zerner comes up here as our business and tells us. So I feel like, and I got two Democrats that, Lord have mercy.
Well, back to our case in point.
Really?
Is that we are passing through all of the savings of the tax abatement to the tenants that have made a commitment to not leave Lawrence, to grow their businesses in Lawrence. They were looking for other opportunities to elevate Lawrence, to help support a redevelopment project in Lawrence that didn't exist. So they found this opportunity, we told them that we would go and continue to pursue an abatement, an incentive that is not to us, it's to them, to support them in their gross rents for the commitment that they've made to stay in Lawrence and to grow their businesses in Lawrence, to help us justify our investment by having tenants in the building of saying, man, this is a dog of a property, but we love it, we love Lawrence, we wanna make it better, and so we've put in our $2 to $3 million, they're putting in 10 years of growing their business in Lawrence, they're putting in cash to put in, to improve their space beyond where it is today, and so we are looking for, to continue this public-private partnership and saying, we like what you're doing, we like businesses that are growing and thriving, we like businesses that are adding employees and making Lawrence a better place to live.
So the adding employees part, I think, is something that interests me, because we hear that often. Is that fair to say, we hear that often? But it ain't too often that I talk to average citizens that say they work in Lawrence. So.
We hope that.
So how many citizens, not hope, I mean, how many people do you have who are currently in Lawrence, right?
Yes, so I can talk to, I can, I can ask both of the employees, our tenants to come up and answer your question. I can also ask them to tell you how many square feet and how many employees they have today, and how many square feet this has grown their space into, and how they plan on doing it, if that would help you.
I'm just curious if they're gonna hire more of our citizens.
Why they do that? Do you mind if I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
So what, to answer your question a little bit, Tyrell, Council, Council Giles, for me, I believe that FHRA has put significant money already into this building, and we're talking $85,000, and 5% comes back to the community, so 78 roughly. If the building's at vacant, FHRA may be on the hook for more than that eventually to either put more money back into it or some future development. So the, this tax abatement piece doesn't hit the city's budget, it affects FHRA's budget.
Well, the tax abatement money doesn't come from the citizens of Lawrence?
It affects, well, for the budget, it affects FHRA's budget, not the city of Lawrence's budget, and. budget. And-
Oh, because the money never comes to our budget anyway, because it's TIF money.
Yes.
So I'm saying, that's what I'm trying to say, is that if I'm a citizen of Lawrence, and I'm giving you a dollar, but your business doesn't put anything into the bucket.
Regardless of the TIF, they're on the fort, so FHRA handles that, that budget.
Right, but we've been told time and time again over the years that there's been totally no development. People bragged on it, that we've done development with no abatement. I mean, that's what's been going on. I mean, we're almost built the place out. It's almost done, right?
Yes.
We only got a couple parcels left, and you guys have developed this for 20 years or more-
Early.
Thirty, with no abatement. And so I'm concerned that I believe that, and I'm not trying to take this too far, but concern and apprehension is the precedent. It's not about the amount of money. I know that we need to develop Franklin Road. I know that there's other things that we need to do in this city, right? And we're always defending while we're here first. So I know that, I'm trying to balance that, to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we got to, you know, on our future development of the city, because I'm sure we're going to do some big things here shortly. So that's the only concern I have. It's not about the dollar amount, it's just that apprehension. And I remember people always telling me, we've done all this work, we're building all these fabulous things without, without asking the citizens of Lawrence for money. Now we're asking citizens of Lawrence for money, and I just want to really make sure that we vet that thoroughly.
No, go ahead.
But I'm sorry for-
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the challenge of all this conversation. It's good politics right here, so. But, but what I would also try to set the precedent of, is that when businesses, successful businesses are wanting to grow within Lawrence, and there's a need, they can come and ask for them from the council to help grow businesses, grow opportunities.
Or, or if successful businesses gave back to Lawrence, that's an asset. So I'm trying to learn, how is this successful businesses adding to the life of Lawrence?
Yeah, so the precedent of a tax abatement should be an incentive tool that you use to attract and, well, attract, recruit-
And retain-
Top talent, top businesses with-
We've done that, we've done that in the city without doing that in the past, in our business, and so, that's the only concern. I won't go back and forth, we'll get the vote, but that's, that's just my concern, you know?
Real quick, Mr. Giles, as I choke here.
I have that effect.
Couple of things. I, Mr. Denny and I have talked before. I'm not a giant fan of TIF districts myself, okay?
Thank God.
Not. They have their uses, they have their purpose, but for a different time.
I'm from the Bill Crawford straight. He raised me, so I'm sorry.
I, I just-
I rest it on.
The tax abatement interest for the FHRA, and I'll go ahead and speak for the administration, they are supportive of this from the standpoint of preserving jobs, good-paying jobs. But from an FHRA, it's the only hat I'm wearing, is the FHRA is ours, and when I conversed with Councilor Denny on this, I made a point, we have such a substantial financial investment, along with our friends Meyer and Agent, we have sold that building, we've bought that building, we've sold that building, we've bought it back, and it's on Lawton Loop. I would not, that's a, that's a fight I don't want. And they've had an eyeball on two properties on the east side, the Marie Chee folks, and this building over the last 10 years in particular, it is a historic building. My skin in the game is, FHRA has a, excuse my French, a buttload of money, and they've got a lot of skin in this property. And I agree with you, is it a precedent? Yes, it is. But it's a precedent I would never go forward with if I didn't, you're talking about having skin in the game. The FHRA has skin in the game, which is that property over there. If we didn't, no offense, I wouldn't be standing here, I'd be home watching a baseball game, I wouldn't be standing here going back, and this is good governing, what this is. I wouldn't be standing here having this conversation.
With that being said, because I appreciate what you're saying, so, these are great businesses, they've been growing, they've been doing well. Is $87,000 over five years going to stop it?
That you'll have to discuss with them. I think it does lessen the burden, you know, the incurred costs have gone through the roof, obviously, we all know that. I think it lessens their burden, considering the tenants themselves will have additional skin to make the internal improvements to the tune of a million-plus dollars.
Is there any more leasing, is there any more space in the building to be leased?
At the turn of the stakes.
Man, I want to move over there and get my rent cheaper.
What we can add on to the bill.
I'm a Lawrence resident, it would help me. Alrighty. I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything else? I'm sorry, I don't-
Mr. President, if I could, you've got $3 million invested in this property right now, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Can I ask, what was the initial outlay for the property, just the property itself?
$200,000.
$200,000? Because I never did hear that number. I mean, Councilor Giles brings up a, a good point. The concern that I have, I've been on the council for eight years, and been coming to meetings for longer than that, but it seems to me that, excuse me, Lawrence is always, the desirable properties that we have seems to always end up in a TIF district, or some, you know, concession that the city makes, whether it be with the utilities. We did that for big businesses, we've made concessions on water usage and water, hooking up sewers and all this. But it just seems we make a lot of concessions. And now I understand that we're to the end of this historic property, pretty much, in our city, though we don't really have much of anything else. So, I mean, it's, I just, I mean, if you've got this much money invested in it so far, I guess I struggle to see how this abatement is really going to help you that much.
Well, it doesn't help us as the investors of the $3 million.
Well, yeah.
It helps the tenants. So we've made, we're looking for a partnership in growing community, and taking assets of the community that were in despair to, a usable asset to grow businesses and grow tax base. So, in that partnership, we, as the owners of the building, jumped into a pool that we didn't know what was in there, and we figured it out. And we said we're willing to deploy time and talent and capital to figure that out, and we did. And then we had to find tenants that wanted to be in that building, and make the building successful for us as the owner, but also for the community as whole and all the partnerships. So we found two businesses in Lawrence that love Lawrence, want to be in Lawrence, wants to grow in Lawrence, and so they are interested in that. As a result of the despair of the building, we're not asking for a handout. It's just an expensive, it's just expensive. It, if you, if you all wanted to dive into the weeds of it, and see all the things that were, like, just even this week, a great story, if you're not in my shoes, this week, we had people in, working on adjusting a column, and putting a beam in to carry some weight, and as they were in there, that column that we didn't know, because the building is 125 years old, and we don't have blueprints, like, fell down, and it scared everybody, and so luckily, that was all structurally still sound, and we, but, we, we just don't know what you get into until you get into it. So we, we've made that investment, they're making an investment into the building to being tenants and growing into the investment. We're asking for the council's support in providing a tax abatement, a tax abatement that otherwise doesn't go back to Lawrence, but for this piece, but for your support and saying thank you in this partnership and growing businesses, and, and continuing in this. And as far as setting precedent forward, we view the precedent as, if you're a growing business and you want to be in Lawrence, come to us, make your case. We want to hear it, we don't want to not hear it. We want to, we want a shot at getting your business into Lawrence. We're a good partner.
May I ask a quick question? Ask, how many jobs, new jobs? Is it about 30 new jobs coming in, in the companies?
Sean Curran, President, Curran Architecture. We currently have 16 employees in a landlocked space in on Lawton Loop, two buildings south. We're in the Barrack 671 building. That space, we have no room to grow in. For us to move would allow us to grow up to 227 employees.
Up, to grow up to 27. What is your immediate, do you have immediate planning hires? Are you looking to-
We currently have a recruiter that is looking for people.
How many open positions do you currently have?
Two.
What, what type of occupants are going in there? Are they like engineers, or?
We're an architecture firm, so it's, it's architects and support staff for the architecture firm.
Mm-hmm. What percent, do you have a clue of how many of your, your people live in Lawrence?
I know one lives in Lawrence, for sure. And we have others that live in Marion County, specifically, but not in Lawrence.
Right.
Real quick question, this is probably redundant, but has anybody checked the zoning for that particular spot? I know the maps run funny. Are you properly zoned to do whatever it is you want to do there?
Yes, we're, we're just a commercial office business.
Okay, well, like I said, sometimes the map runs odd, so.
You know, there's some questions I asked you didn't answer. What's the valuation of the building now?
Man, I wish I knew that.
You ain't took no loans out on that building, had that building appraised?
Uh, well, yeah, but at the time, we took a loan out on the building, there was another value was not, we had to put more cash in than the-
So it hasn't been appraised since, since the renovation?
Since we have tenants in the building. And I, in this market right now, with cap, cap rates and rates, it's of debate, and can you find buyers in this market?
I don't remember what year you said you purchased it. Was it 12, 20?
21.
21.
2021.
Are you planning to be a long-term?
We are planning to be a long-term owner. We, it's, we, we bought it with the intention of holding it for 10-plus years. This isn't a big flip kind of scenario, it's in an opportunity.
But it increases the, increases the balance, you know, increases the balance sheet now.
Yeah, well, the, the business we're in, you're right, the business that I'm in is, is, is to create value, so.
Right.
And the business you're in is to create value, so.
So, I mean, so typically, people know, if they're investing, they know what the value they're doing, so. I'm just, you know, I'm just trying, I understand, if you don't want to put your business out there, that's fine, but I just, I'm just curious to, because my thing is, you know, sometimes people throw out big numbers.
Yes.
But they're not as big as they may seem. And so, that's, that's where I'm getting at. I mean, if you put $3 million into a building that's worth twice that, then, I mean-
It's not worth that.
I don't know, you know, I don't-
It's, it's not worth that.
Okay. The house next door is worth a million.
I just have one more comment.
We can call for a vote.
All right. Well, then, so there's 27 employees. How many did you say there would be total?
There's 16.
Sean Curran, Sean Curran has 16, planning to, to almost double that size during his tenancy, maybe more, and then-
I'm Chuck Bichette, President of Mark III Management. We own the office building it. The address, 9650 East 59th Street. We currently have seven employees. When we move, we're going to be only adding one. However, we have committed to sell that office building to the Spanish Advantage Club.
Mmm.
We're going to renovate that space, add five to six classrooms, so they're going to be adding some additional jobs. So it's not just-
So you own the building that you're moving out of?
Yes.
Selling that building, moving into this one, and renting from him?
Yes.
And you got a great business that's valuable?
Well, I mean-
I'm just putting it all together, ain't that what he said?
Well, and that, there's a good, I mean, I, I-
You're selling a business on the fort.
Great story, though.
Right. I'm not here for stories, I'm here to protect the taxpayers of District One. I'm concerned about the folks in District One who will be paying for this, and because in my district, most of my people are high renters, they pay a higher property value. So, I'm really advocating for my people. I'm, I'm pro-business. But here, I'm elected to protect the folks on 46th Street.
I would add, and just to, so with that group, so we have three businesses that sound like they may expand as we go through this, all on the fort.
Sorry.
There's food options, a lot of food options on the fort, there's gas stations on the fort. So I would imagine the revenue from the, the food and beverage tax, the, the gas tax, these other places, we're-
We don't have a sit-down restaurant on the fort, yeah. That's one of the knocks we got on the fort.
There's a few.
We don't have a sit-down restaurant.
There's a few, and that, that would-
It's coming soon.
This just adds to the generation of our residual businesses around, around the fort.
Yeah.
I did want to mention one thing, is because I know you were saying that I'm going to be selling my building to move in to the PX building, paying him rent. Part of my lease, I have the option to buy that building when they put it up for sale.
In 10 years?
Well, whenever they put it up for sale.
He told me he wasn't going to sell, he's holding for 10.
Right.
It's a little snow on the top of there, I'm sure, 10 years from now.
So I know that, that we have a 10-year lease, that's what, we signed our lease for, was for 10 years, that I have in my lease, that if they ever put it up for sale, that I have the right-
First right to refusal. I got a few first rights to refusal I hope to never exercise. All right. I don't want to talk all day. I'm really sorry, I apologize. Can we call for a vote?
Can we get his name for the record?
Sir, they need your name for the record.
Chuck Bichette.
Bichette.
P.E.C.H.B.T.T.
P.E.
Motion, yeah.
P.
No, I want to call for a motion, yeah, that's why, moving on.
P.E.
C.H.
B.T.T. Thank you.
Okay, I didn't realize that, I'm sorry, guys. You guys have been on my mind. All right. You guys, all right. So, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
You'll second?
That was quick.
All right, she got to go. All in favor? Pose. Motion carries.
That was four, four, right?
Right.
That is four, two.
One, two, three, four, two.
You have to have five.
You have a quorum of the full council, correct, Kathy?
Yeah, you have to have five.
They have to have five yeses for that to pass. That did not pass.
Have to have five yeses for that to pass?
Correct.
Yes.
Do you want to recall that?
I'll recall it. I'll recall it. Don't get me run off of 46th Street, okay?
State, you state for the record what just happened, so everybody will understand.
Okay, so there are only six council members here today, but for any motion of the council to pass, a quorum of the full council, which is five of nine, have to vote in favor to pass a resolution or ordinance tonight. What just happened was it only got four votes instead of five. So we're going to recall that vote, and do it over again.
I'm going to recall it.
And see if the vote changes.
Oh, now we understand, okay.
So that everybody understands what just happened. If you want it to pass, somebody has to put their vote.
All right.
So they need-
I recall for the vote, so I can't say nothing else, can I?
Do we need to make a motion to recall the vote?
Why don't we make a motion to recall?
I'll make a motion to recall the vote.
Second.
We make a law.
Then you need to make a mo, okay.
Lauren.
Now, vote, vote on the motion to recall it.
So that she's to make a motion to recall?
Yep, yep.
All right, so we'll vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Six, zero.
Oh, no, no, yeah, all, no, no, sorry, no.
What was the vote?
Five, one.
Who voted no?
Wells.
You voted yes or no?
All right. Do we need a new motion?
Now we need a new motion.
I'll make it my approval.
To approve.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, wait a minute.
All in favor?
One, two, three, four.
Lauren and Denny?
Opposed.
Lauren and Denny made the motion?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, who's in favor?
Five.
Five.
Five to no.
Right.
Are we going to be able to do any other votes?
I hope to see you guys back here again, with some of those new employees that you're going to bring into the city, all right? That was a, I changed my vote, because I believe in business, I don't believe in abatements, and I pray that this won't cause a frenzy. And when it does, because you're going to be in Lawrence, if it does, I'm calling you, and I want you to come up here to that meeting and advocate to why we did this for you. Don't run on me, because I'll be here, okay? All right. I'm serious, though, okay? All right. Say thank you, there you go. All right.
Very much.
Be better, have chocolate chip cookies.
And somebody owes me one.
All right. I can't say that, maybe she can.
And councilmen, where I can, somebody owes me one. And councilmembers, just as a reminder, since Council, Councilor Russell had to leave, if you are passing anything else tonight, it must now be unanimous in order to pass.
Because we only got five of us.
Because we only have five of us.
Right, okay.
And many of these things, you know, still need to, the salary ordinances for employees need to pass before, you know, we leave tonight. need to pass before, you know, we leave tonight unless y'all want a special meeting.
No. So moving forward, we've now, okay. Proposal number, proposal number eight. Get it read by title.
Proposal number eight, 2023, introduced by Counselor Whitfield. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, repealing certain secondary business permit fees in Title IV, Articles 1 and 2 of the Lawrence Municipal Code.
That's in code committee. It remains there. All right. Number, proposal number 10. Get it read by title, I'm sorry.
Proposal number 10, 2023, introduced by Counselors Chevlot, Russell, and Wells. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2024.
I would like to table this until our next meeting, if that's okay? I'll table this. All right.
That's for
That's the appointed officers and employees.
No, that's city employees, civilian.
That has to be adopted by November 1.
Oh, we marked the wrong one. I'm sorry. I wrote out my, I wrote my notes and marked the wrong
On that one? It has to be adopted by
Fixing appointment. Okay, so then, I'm sorry. Okay, it's number, okay. Oh, no, 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 we're going to do that. I'm sorry, I wrote the wrong thing down on my, was it the wrong thing down there? All right. So let's go, let's move forward. Proposal number 10, please read by, please read by title.
Read it again.
Yes.
Proposal number 10, 2023, introduced by Counselors Chevlot, Russell, and Wells. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2024.
All right. I will entertain a motion. So move, so move.
Second.
Second. You second?
Second, Counselor Whitfield. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Came out of finance, too.
Right. As a pass, yeah.
All three of these came out of finance.
Right. Recommended. Sorry, yeah. Okay, so the next one is number 11, right?
Correct.
Proposal number 11, please read by title.
Proposal number 11, 2023, introduced by Counselors Chevlot, Russell, and Wells. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the Police Department and the Fire Department for the year 2024.
All right. Can I, we'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
Deb can have it.
For all, show all in favor?
We're all in favor.
All right, motion passes. All right, number, okay, number 12. Could you read that by title, please?
Proposal number 12, 2023, introduced by Counselors Chevlot, Russell, and Wells. A proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials for the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2024.
I would like to table this until our next meeting. All right. Moving right along, proposal number 13. Right, pass, I'm sorry. Oh, make sure we got everything. We got it in order. Okay, resolution number 10.
12.
We didn't do 10 first, yeah. 10, yep.
Resolution number 10, 2023, introduced by Counselor Denny. A resolution to adopt application form and evaluation rubric for community service grants for the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana.
All right. I wanted to give, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. President, could I ask Counselor Davis is not here for additional time for this to be in committee, since she has been out of the country. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes. Sorry for that. Perfect. All right, moving right along, resolution number 12. Sorry, Kathy.
It's okay. We're going as fast as
Trying to push you on
Going as fast, thank you.
Since we jumped out of order. Resolution number 12, 2023, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the transfer appropriations between major budget classifications.
All right.
Mr. President, this was heard in finance tonight and it was recommended out of finance three to zero.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, Counselor Whitfield, second, Counselor Freeman. We'll work that out. All right. We'll entertain a vote. All, motion, all in favor, motion carries. Oh, Rick, I almost forgot. All right. Call her up. Ms. Judy? Ms. Judy Logston? Logston, please come on up and say your name and address again.
It is Judy Logston, 5230 North Franklin Road.
All right, thank you, ma'am. How can we help you today?
First, thank you for putting the citizens' comments back on the agenda. I want to discuss a known issue. And it's for Councilperson Tyrell Giles, who currently serves as the president. She is not eligible to hold his current seat pursuant to Indiana Code. As a courtesy and quick reference, I've got a copy of the code as cited for each member of the council. Transparency and trust of the government are essential to our democracy. I'm sure you'll agree. As locally elected leaders, you, council members, all of you, serve on the forefront and your actions or enactions impact our community more quickly than any other. Our community members, all neighborhoods deserve adequate representation. And I feel it is the duty of the entire council to uphold these rules. I respectfully request that this council to adhere to the rules and procedures explicitly outlined in the Indiana law. Councilmen, I am confident in your abilities to execute your duties of this council. And I urge you to vacate this council member's seat due to his non-residency status.
Did you sleep with me last night? Seriously? How do you know where I live? How do you know where I reside? Did you stay in my house last night?
No, but your residency is a known issue and your address is
It might be an issue. I've already won the case, but did you stay in my house last night?
No, I did not.
Okay, so then you don't know where I, you don't know where I was at last night, but I do know where I reside. The court has already won this case.
No, the court has not.
Okay, well, I would assume that you get a lawyer and try it.
Okay. Well, I'm addressing